This meeting or special work session of, what is today, January?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
My pleasure to be here. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
All right, Jody's on her way. Colton can't make it. He's got weird work hours, so he's hating it, I think. Um, let's see. So I'd like to start, let's do roll call.
Mayor Loughlin?
Here.
Councilperson Sexton?
Here.
Dean?
Goodweiler?
Here.
Um, so we've got a little outline here. FY nineteen twenty budget certification sheet, which is these two?
That's, that is, those are the last two years and then the current one that I had completed.
So I thought we'd start with the big picture and then we can migrate into the brushstrokes of the.
Can we, I guess, I don't know what the best way to go through this is. On the first sheet, well, at the top, our taxable values have increased.
Which one you want to know?
I'm on the first, on the sixteen forty-two for the twenty-one, the current year. That's the one that's, that should be right there, I think.
Does it say, what's it say on the top of it?
Sixteen four, one forty-two, but it's for the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one.
Got it.
Yeah. That would be the, should be the first one on your group.
We even need the nineteen twenty?
Well, if you want to look at what our history has been.
Okay. So does that include one of these that has a one point six or a two point five?
Yeah. It's the, and near the top it says, you're ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, I know that, but which one does it have the one of the cost of adjustment?
Oh, in the lower right it has thirteen point one five five three one.
Yeah, you've got two different.
Yeah, there's one that has thirteen oh nine. Everything in the packet is geared to the thirteen point one five five one. It's six cents over.
Correct.
I just didn't do anything to make it balance. Our property values went up last year about eight million dollars. The debt service values went up more than, I think, I don't have last year's right here, I guess. Anyway, the debt service is the one sixty-one.
One fifty-two.
If you look down at the bottom, then you take your rate of third, of two point two six two one, multiply that times one hundred and sixty-one thousand seven thirty-nine because you're paying thirteen dollars and nine, thirteen and nine cents per thousand of taxable valuation. That raises three hundred and sixty-five thousand. That's the column A. The column B is, the difference between those two columns is excise tax that Alliant Energy and Utility companies pay to the county and then it comes to us that way. The debt service levy is based, basically everything here are the taxes that we're going, the property taxes on this form are what we're going to get. So this year we're going to get one million, if it goes down six cents, it'll be about fifteen thousand less, but one million nine hundred and thirty-three thousand roughly.
That's a projected revenue from property taxes?
Yes. We will have additional taxes that come in. There'll be road use tax of maybe three hundred thousand plus.
Doesn't show up here, though.
No, it doesn't show up here. All these numbers do correspond to what the revenue and expense budgets show and we can go through that. I'm not sure, if you want to just look at these forms for a moment?
Yeah, I wanted to start with these bigger brushstrokes, bigger, I guess, and then we'll, we'll get into the, I guess, the departmental is what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Expenditures and revenues, I guess. So explain a little bit, these pages numbered one through.
Okay. That's the order in which they come from the state. A number of these forms you fill out in one area and they feed additional pages. Page two is the notice that we had to publish, that maximum hearing amount. That's what, the maximum we can.
It's on the backside of the.
Assess for property taxes. And that came from, actually came from the first page. It was just fed automatically. Page three is the fill-in that we receive, the backfill from the state.
Ninety thousand bucks about.
Yeah. And I was, we were told when we went to a seminar by Ted Nellison of the Department of Management to use eighty percent level because it, there are so many people requesting backfill and the state has, legislature is limited. You're going, only going to get a percentage. So if you put too high a percentage there, you're going to fall short in your budget. So he said eighty percent and that's what I used.
So what number did you plug in there, seventy-five thousand or something?
I, it, I, what I do is in line one and two, I fill those valuations in and then come down here and I select the eighty percent and then it, the computer fills in lines three, four, five, and six. I don't have anything I can do to affect that other than choose the percentage.
So that amounts to about ninety thousand bucks.
Yeah. And if, if we don't, if the state doesn't backfill, then we, our budget is short, whatever it doesn't backfill. Page four are the fund balances. Basically, we have to, the first four lines are for the year ending last June, June thirtieth, a year ending FY twenty-nine. We ended the year on the far right with three million five hundred and seventy-five thousand in the bank and it was broken down into the various funds listed, listed there. And we have to, then what we have to do, take the beginning balance, do estimated refund, estimated revenues and expenditures for this year and then come up with an estimated balance for June thirty of twenty twenty, which will be our beginning balance for the new fiscal year. So that's what, you take your ending balance from June thirty of nineteen, that becomes line five, then you reestimate your revenues and expenditures and that gives you your ending balance for line eight. And that's, that's, those are speculation. I mean, it's the best estimate I could come up with. It's, there's no guarantee, but I hope we.
Those are expenditures, lines six and seven?
Uh, six is revenue, seven is expenditures. You add your expenditures, or add your revenues to your beginning balance, subtract your expenditures and that gives you your ending balance. So that gives us our beginning balance for June, July one of this coming, of this year, which will be the start of our fiscal year twenty-one. Then, the budget numbers that I put in are in line ten for revenue and expenditures, line eleven, and that comes out to line twelve, which gives us our fund, estimated fund balances. Now, I did put two hundred thousand dollar bank loan in there just because I was concerned about whether or not we're going to have cash flow meeting our timing. So I put it in there and said, all right, if we need to, we can borrow two, we'll borrow two hundred thousand for some capital projects. It's, there's nothing that says we have to or anything, but it's just to kind of cover myself in case I had some miscalculations.
Say, say line twelve one more time.
Line twelve is our estimated beginning cash balance starting July one of twenty twenty.
But you said line eight was our proposed.
That, that's.
July balance twenty.
Oh, I misspoke. Line twelve is next year. I misspoke, Jody. I'm sorry.
January first of twenty-one twenty-one?
January twelve of twenty-one, of twenty twenty-one. That, that's what line twelve is. I misspoke. Line eight is our projected beginning balance for July one of twenty twenty. Then we'll have next year's revenues and expenses and then we'll end the balance, end the year with that balance in line twelve.
June?
June thirty, yes. Yes.
So beginning the year with two point eight balance and ending the year with two point eight.
Yeah, that.
So we're losing twenty thousand, no, we're losing fourteen thousand somehow?
Yeah.
Fourteen thousand dollars.
It's kind of a coincidence. There was no.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to make sure we had enough to cover ourselves. Page five, we get a, an assessment notice from the local emergency, county emergency management and they said, this is what we should expect to be assessed. So that's what I put in the budget. Pages, I guess I stapled the numbers over the staple, put the staples in the numbers for part of them. But six and seven are reestimated expenditures. Line, the, the far right column is actual for last year, for the year ending June thirty. That was something I entered from the, it's called annual financial report that I, that we filed.
So this was June thirtieth, twenty nineteen?
For column K. Yes. Column K.
Yes. Yes.
Yep. And then column J is what we're estimating the current year.
June of this year.
Yes. Now, these, where it says on the left, public safety, public works, health and social services, those match areas in, on our expenditure report. There's activities that we, we match and when we budget, we, we have to use those functions or activities and that's, that's the way the state says we, we're to classify our expenses.
So once again, at the bottom of page J, column J on page seven, two point eight three three is the same number as our beginning fund balance.
Yes. That.
For this fiscal year that we're working on. Is that right?
That should be correct, yes. Fund balance, that's our beginning balance. That'll be our, well, ending balance for June thirty. Beginning balance for the new year. Yes.
What was that?
Page seven.
The starting point, basically.
Bottom of page.
Bottom of page seven, two point eight three three is the same number as. On our fund balance.
Page four.
Yep. That's what I'm estimating our cash balance to be on July one or June thirty. Then page eight is, shows our revenues and then at the bottom, okay, it shows beginning balances. Uh, well, sometimes it's hard to follow the way the state does it, but on, on this, on page eight, at the top are the revenues. On the left, at the top, we'll go, we can go through it kind of quickly. General, column C, those are the property taxes. And then, and you should go down the column, there are different types of revenues that we receive. The excise taxes from the utility companies are there on line six. Utility franchise tax, basically from Liberty Communications and MediaCom, the twenty-four thousand. Hotel mo tax, I estimated sixteen thousand. Then various other expenses, or revenues rather, are listed there. So general revenue will be one point eight million. Special revenues are taxes that we have identified on the first sheet. If you look down the bottom two-thirds, special revenue levies, emergency, police and fire, well, we don't use retire, police and fire retirement, FICA and IPRs and other employee benefits. Those are taxes, those are expenditures we can levy for and they're listed in the special revenue column.
So those are showing up right here on this, this sheet.
They're.
There, there's these.
Yes, yep.
Back of the, we can revenue, but.
Yeah.
For those.
Now, when, when you look at this, okay, uh, yeah, the, um, for, at the top it shows two hundred and ninety-three thousand. Those are, should be, uh, FICA, other employee benefits. And I think there must be some, something else in there. Oh, I'm looking at, okay. Is everyone looking at page eight?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, those are taxes, the special revenues, the, the way the state identifies them anyway. They're to pay tax, our, our fringe benefits and things like that, insurance, local option sales taxes in, in the special revenues column. And then, and intergovernmental, because it comes from the state, the road use tax is classified down there. So we've got revenues, special revenues totaling eight hundred thousand in our reestimate. The, in TIF, column E, that's the money we expect to receive from the county for TIF request this year. We've gotten quite a bit of it. It hasn't all come in. More will come in in April and May. The debt service, that is what we're going to receive to pay the general obligation debt. And that's, uh, we levy taxes for that. That's the, that bottom line, uh, line forty on the front. That's, that's where that would come from. That would come from last year, I believe. Well, that's what we levied last year. Three hundred and thirty-five thousand plus the excise tax. So I guess we levied three thirty-seven something.
You said line forty?
Uh, line forty from last year.
Which, which sheet, this one here?
Yes.
Sixteen forty-two, yeah.
Yeah.
That's on the, it's in.
It, the total.
On page one?
Well, there it is, line four, down at the bottom. Debt service levy. Okay, three hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Three sixty-five, yeah. Three sixty-five, eight seventy-two.
Okay, then, under column G, federal grants and reimbursements. Basically, that's the money we received from the state of Iowa for the College Street Bridge. That's pretty much what, what that is. Next year we'll have money from the state of Iowa for that widening project. We really don't have much of anything in the permanent column. I think we had twelve hundred dollars of revenue on line thirty-six there on page eight. Proprietary is our utilities, basically, what we're going to get for utilities revenue. So we had to do all this reestimating, then we start putting in the numbers and seeing with our current budget and that's what page nine is, the preliminary. And this matches what we have in your revenue and expense reports.
Okay, so page nine moves into expenditures now.
Yes, yes. And I put, put the budgets that I received from the department heads into the computer, get a report and then I enter that information on here.
What column do you look at here?
Well, we, in line one is police, I guess. The four hundred and forty-two thousand, if just, we, if you want to get your, that'll be the first, one of your expenditure reports. We should be able to find those numbers on here. What we have to do is add, it's on the first page here. You, um, you'll add the general fund and then it says tort liability. Add those two numbers, that's four thirty-one plus eleven, that's four forty-two. And so that equals the four forty-two, three eighty in column C, line one. The special revenues would be the work comp, the, um, FICA, the health insurance. That's what's in column D. And that is, well, it says trust and agency, one oh four, seven fifty-nine. That's trust and agency items are in, all in column D.
Okay, so, just a minute.
Mm-hmm.
So you took, you took this number here.
Yes.
And added the tort liability to it?
Yes.
And that's.
That is in line one. That's line one, column C.
Got it. Thank you.
Uh-huh. And essentially, we do that for all departments that are in public safety. Public safety has police, fire, building inspection and animal control. Those are the four departments in public safety. Then, we do, we do the same thing for budget, for public works. Public works has taxes coming from both general fund as well as road use tax. And again, it's the same thing. The tax, the fringe benefits are in column D and everything else is in column C. Now, um, I guess, I don't know how much we want to get into it on this sheet, but you can see kind of how the system works now. Does it make a little bit of sense?
Yeah.
There's a, there's a lot here to.
I had questions earlier. I can't, I'm losing them now.
Well, well, anytime you have a question, just, just, just let me know. I'll try to answer it. But these numbers come from these reports here. I guess that, and then we can go through these reports and you can see where they are on, on the, on the state budget form. If we, we have the same thing. We have the expenditures and revenues and transfers in and out to arrive at our ending balance. And then on page twelve is, is a summary of all the expenditures. Well, I guess, yeah, it's got all the expenditures and revenues on page twelve. And it actually, it has our actual for the year ending June thirty, twenty nineteen. It has our estimated for twenty twenty and then has our budget. So you can see what, what things look like, where, where they're changing. Then at the bottom, it shows on line thirty-four, column J is our projected fund balance at the end of the year. And that should be the same as that other page.
Okay, so column J is what we're working with. That's our, we're working on.
Yeah. Yep. And that's the one that has.
So I see line seventeen is a total revenue of six million seventy-five thousand.
Yes.
And then.
And it's broken down by how much will come from general, how much special TIF revenues, debt service, how much will come from capital project financing, um, permanent, that's basically interest on some funds that the state says we are not supposed to spend. And proprietary would be what we're getting from our utilities.
Okay, then column J, line thirty has six million eighty-nine thousand, which is fourteen thousand more than the revenue.
Okay, well, we have transfers. We have expenditures that, we have to make transfers from the water fund to the water sinking fund to pay our SRF loans, state revolving fund for, for some sewer, sewer water debt. I think it's water. Anyway, those transfers are listed on lines twenty-nine, I think twenty-nine, transfers out. Then there's a, I think another page where it's, there's, the same amounts are transfers in. But you are correct, there, our revenue is going to be fourteen thousand. Okay, at thirty, line thirty-two, expenditures are fourteen thousand less than, are fourteen thousand greater than our revenue. I'll get it right yet. And that leaves the, the ending balance.
So we're fourteen thousand over?
Well, we'll have fourteen thousand more expenses than revenue, which comes out of the fund balance. And, you know, some years we can.
Out of the two point eight.
Yeah.
City.
Yeah.
Fund balance. Out of the two point eight million.
Yeah. Page thirteen is the debt of the city, the, the long-term debt at least, um. And I have reduced the amount in column J and line one so that we could levy more taxes to service the debt. If we don't do that, our water fund is in kind of tough shape. That's the reason I did that, and I guess the council can make a decision if that's what they want to do or not do.
You said you reduced column, the amounts in column J?
I reduced the co- amount in column J just on line one to increase. Column K, so that we can use the water fund money to pay some, pay for the project that is not paid for.
So reducing column J, does that reflect on this sheet here, so it's levable?
What, what it does.
Recovered.
Column K, at the bottom, column K, uh, line thirty, it shows three hundred and sixty-five thousand eight seventy-two. That should be on the front. It's in column A, line forty, the three sixty-five, eight seventy-two.
You're allowed to levy for, to raise money for that?
Yes, yes.
Right.
So that's, we went very hurriedly, I'm sorry, but that's kind of how it. How, that's how it works. I know I can't explain it very well in a brief amount of time, but.
So what number was it in there?
Well, Matt Mukler was kind of paying what he wanted to out of there, there's no obligation. It's a general obligation bond, which means it's not, it could all be paid by tax levy. He was paying more than I am paying this year, than I budgeted. But because the water fund and sewer fund both need some money to do some projects, we can't pay everything out of those funds and still have money to do projects.
So is that a reduced payment then?
No, no, we're making the right payment, it's just we're levying taxes to make up for the amount that's not coming out of the water and sewer funds. He was taking about eighty thousand out of the water fund and about ninety thousand out of, uh, the sewer fund.
Without levying.
Without, that, that, that was coming from the fund balance, from the revenues that the, uh, funds, that the systems generated, from, from sales of water and sewer.
And he, what was he paying with that?
He, it, our first item there is a general obligation bond, they borrowed money to do some, Matt probably knows better than I do, uh, su- uh. What? Uh, the water tank and some other thing.
A while ago.
Yes, it happened.
And then we did the lift station, I don't know if this, didn't it all kind of get wrapped together and?
Yeah, they refinanced it in twenty thirteen.
So the water tower and the twelve-inch and all that from two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, somewhere around there, that's what part of this is.
Okay, but it was all done as a general obligation bond, which means it didn't have to come out of the revenue. Matt felt it should, and I don't disagree, it's good to have those funds, those. Those sewer and water utilities pay for themselves, but they can't, they can't do it all at once.
Okay.
So that's the reason, and.
So when does that get paid off?
Yeah, I, I've, I've got a schedule here.
Okay.
It, it's, it's probably mid twenties. I, I, I don't know exactly, Jerry, but we can find out.
Is that the amount in column B, two point seven three million?
That was the original amount.
Oh, original, okay.
That's the original amount. The amount in column I is the interest and principal payment that is due June one, so. Well, that's not quite true, because there's, we did make an interest payment in December. We pay half of our interest in, on December one, the other half of the interest on June one, plus we pay all the principal on June one. So, I think we paid about eighty thousand dollars in the, on December one, so we'll pay another eighty thousand, I guess, yeah, about that, in, on June one, plus we'll pay all the principal on June one.
This says principal due fiscal year twenty twenty-one, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, column E.
It says eight ninety-seven.
Eight ninety-seven.
There at the bottom?
Yes.
There at the bottom.
That's the total payment for all the bonds.
Hey, I'm looking on line one.
That's just for that project. Those projects, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, looks like the principal due, is what you're saying, I believe.
Yeah, just for that one project, or that one bond. When you add them all up, it's eight hundred and.
Eight ninety-seven.
Eight ninety-seven.
Eight hundred thousand. Okay, um. What, okay, there's nine hundred thousand then in debt payment, is that due in twenty twenty-one?
That is due.
And then the one hundred and sixty-five thousand, is that due in twenty?
But that's.
That's, that's interest.
But that's split, right?
Yeah, that's split.
So you're doing eighty and eighty, or eighty-two, eighty-three, or whatever?
Yeah.
Paying one sixty-five.
The interest will pay. Okay, we, there's a schedule like this that we're going to use for this coming June, it'll be about the same, I didn't bring it in here, but it, it's about the same amount of payment. That's why I say we, we have to come up with a million bucks every June one. And, uh. But, but that's, that is this, now. If you want to look at these revenue and expense reports and see how they fit into this, we can do that.
Revenue first?
Whatever you want.
I do revenue first.
Okay. Yep, that's. It's dated one twenty of twenty twenty at eight twenty-seven P.M. The first item is the police operation. The only thing I have right now is the school resource officer, I've got nine thousand dollars, that's what I budgeted last year, and we'll probably get, if you look in, uh, where it says twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, year-to-date, actual, that's what we've gotten through the end of December, so that's half a year. Not all things come in evenly, evenly throughout the year, some, some things are more even than others. So, we've got nine thousand budgeted for the police. In the fire department, we start out, these are the contracts that Kevin has with the, uh, pound dress, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand. We estimated contributions of four thousand, and then. The eighty-nine oh eight I have there because we're assessing, we're levying for that, so we're going to get revenue, we'll pay it out, we'll get it in. On the next page, on page two, uh, road use tax, I budgeted three hundred and ten thousand. It's. You know, it could, we could get more, I mean, I.
Where'd that number come from?
Well.
I see three hundred last year and three oh two the year before that.
And I, I, I just, our revenues have been higher, there, it's, it's based on per capita.
Yeah.
But we've been, we've been getting more revenues, so I, I boosted up a little bit, but I hate to put it up and then not get it, and then, then we say, well, I, I spent the money, why, I did my part, you didn't do yours, so. Anyway, that's.
Do we know how much? Do we know how much we give per, um, resident?
I thi- I thi- I think I've, I, I don't remember, I, I was. I, I, I don't know if they just divide the, the tot- estimated revenues in a month by our twenty-ten population figure, and then they, it goes to the whole state. So, some months, this month, we got thirty-one thousand dollars. Last month, I thought it was around eighteen thousand, or twenty, twenty-five or eighteen, I can't remember.
So that kind of depends on what the state gets in to its coffers.
Yeah.
Through the gasoline tax.
Yeah.
Or other tax. So this, this year is a census year, so that twenty-one.
We should have a higher population.
You should have, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how much mo- more, but.
Okay, yeah. So.
But.
Yeah, okay.
I don't, I don't know when the numbers will be available.
So you got about ten thousand from pre, from last year.
It's an increase of ten thousand over last year, whether it's not enough, I, I don't know, it's just an estimate.
Okay.
The library revenues, Nick has a very good handle on that, and I just match whatever he puts for property tax, but he, he knows what he's going to get for revenue, so I don't, I don't have, I don't question it. Park and recreation, those are fees that we have for the various activities, and these, some of these are estimates, I think, for Melissa for concession sales, concession sales, and field rental especially. We don't know what we're going to get because of the new ball field. So. That's where that revenue comes from. Cemetery, we do sell some lots, and we have a fee for grave openings. There's not, there's not a lot of revenue there.
I'm waiting till I have to.
Pardon?
I'm waiting till I have to spend money.
Well.
Maybe my kids will.
Well, sometimes you get surprised, I'll tell you. Civic Center, I don't think we're, the eighteen thousand is what we're levying. I think the eighteen, that should be on the first page, eighteen, in column A, line nine, eighteen, eight ninety-eight, that's a, a property tax levy.
Says mobile home taxes.
They, the county, when they make property tax payments to us, they tell us how much is. For mobile homes, how much is for various types of taxes. I, when, when you see it in the next, next column to the left, sixty-nine dollars, I got that money, that information from the county, and that's what, that's where I show it.
Sixty-nine dollars, is that probably because they don't consider the mobile homes anymore in mobile homes?
Well, I, I, I can't say.
Vehicle tax. Well, because they're not really mobile.
They, they.
Take the wheels off them, they're not mobile anymore.
Still a vehicle, though.
They don't, they don't pay much in taxes, I, that, that's all I can tell you, but I don't know all the taxable ramification, or the, how, how they determine the taxes, I should say. Uh, I guess we, we go way down to page five and look at TIF debt service. Four fifty-two, three thirty-nine, that should come from our, uh, TIF certification. And the thirty-three, eight ninety-nine, that's what we requested next year for Casey's. We had, that's, actually, we requested that, and that's what, um, Kerry said, Kerry, uh, put on a, on our certification. So, that's what, the, the four fifty-two, that'll go basically to the, uh, for bond payments. Then eventually, there'll be more, and some will go to bond payments, and some will go to, um, M, K L M, and some go to Little Lights.
That's not on, that's not on this year, right?
No, no, you're correct. The next area, general obligation debt service, that three hundred and sixty-three thousand, that should be from page one of our, uh, certification sheet. That's when, then the difference is the excise tax, so that's your total three hundred and sixty-five thousand eight seventy-two, those first two items there. And then, this is an I, I, area that the state, uh, says they're going to do some backfill, and that's where that fifteen, six sixty-six number came from. The next area is capital projects, and. All I have, I guess we can go through it, I've got two projects right here, relocating water and sewer lines, four hundred and fifty thousand would be what the state of Iowa will pay, if we have to borrow money, I put it in there, just because. We may need to, just because I wanted to cover myself, as, as good a reason as any, because we, we'll just have to see what, uh, when, when that activity starts.
That projected via five hundred and fifty thousand dollar project?
No, four, I think four fifty, so we, we should have enough money, but we don't have another project that apparently they have to do, this would be for the east side of. The city, and there's another project on the west side that I don't know the cost of yet.
So, but you said earlier rolled in two hundred thousand dollars of borrowing.
Yeah, there's one hundred for this and a hundred thousand, I, I, I guess I.
Wapsy, okay, okay.
Yeah, and down there.
Just for cash flow.
Yeah, just, and it's just to make everything look better, is what it amounts to, if we need to, we, we can do it without amending our budget, hopefully, we will not have to. But that, I've got, now you have to think about, you know, what, what else you want to do, we have money, uh. I didn't, I guess I forgot to budget anything for, um. Now, this is revenue, I guess, I guess I'm getting ahead of myself, sorry. On page, are we all on page?
Page eight?
Eight, no, these are water fund. Projections. I guess it's a little higher than our current year, but. I don't know if, you know, if we're going to get some of these revenues or not, our. There's a line that says reimbursements, that was actually an insurance payment we received because our well was struck by lightning, and we had. and we had to replace it. I hope we don't have to have anything like that again. We've had, I think, lightnings strike us twice in the last three years. This year, I think we got some reimbursement, but it wasn't that much, the ninety-nine oh seven, I guess. And the sewer fund, I, I, I guess I increased the revenue there a little bit.
That should actually go up quite a bit. We're adding another two dollars and fifty cents to it.
You are correct, yeah.
Well, that should do it.
I'll have to recalculate that, Jerry.
That's about twenty percent?
What is it now, seven bucks?
Seven seventy-nine is going up to ten twenty-nine.
Twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Two dollars, more than that.
Thirty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty-three percent.
Yeah, I have a thirty percent.
Yeah, well, it went up from seven, call it seven fifty, and went up two fifty, so it's a thirty-three percent.
That needs to get pigeonholed into another little.
Well, that's something we need to talk about, what, what, what to do. I mean, it's not that.
We don't need to figure it out now, but.
No, but, I mean, you're right. Well, it'll just, what will happen, when we get the money, it will just go into the revenue fund. I'm, you know, I'm not, we can't spend it for anything except sewer fund, sewer projects, sewer expenses.
We don't wanna be in there and go, oh, God, we've got all this extra money, let's do this project, and then when we get to the sewer plant, it's like, oh, we don't have any money, because we spent it on other projects.
That's right, that's right.
You have to keep track of it. Extra two fifty.
So is the direction to put it, open a, a separate account?
Yeah, I would say so, that's what, that's what it was, yeah.
Okay. If that's the consensus, that's what we'll do.
A separate bank account, is that what you want, or a separate ledger?
Like, three twenty, three twenty-one.
Say, put it in a bank account, start drawing some interest on it.
Pardon?
I'd put it in a bank account, draw interest on it.
Our checking account gets interest. I mean, it, it's all in one account.
It's all part of that two point eight million.
Yes, all in one account.
It's all in one account, but we can have a
Separate line.
Separate line item for it, if that, that would be easier.
Okay, so that's a little different. You want a separate, on a, a ledger account, or a separate bank account? Those are two different things, okay.
We don't need a separate bank account.
No, I think that, that makes it much easier, yes.
Okay. Sewer revenue may increase that.
Yeah, that would, I'm glad you caught that.
It'll increase, but it's, we're not gonna spend it. It'll increase, but not to be spent.
So we're looking at four hundred thousand, what you estimated? So if that goes up a third, we're gonna add another hundred and twenty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hundred and thirty.
But actually, it's not, because that money's being put aside for future.
It'll, it'll increase a fund balance.
Yeah.
That, that's.
Okay, so this is what I don't understand. On the this one. That whole owing, that you, that number you decreased, the eighty-six thousand, right? So that, that's.
On the law.
Back on this one.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so that was for the sewer, right?
Sewer and water both.
Okay.
Yeah. He was paying about eighty thousand from the water fund, and about ninety thousand from the sewer fund. And then there's another thirty-seven thousand that comes out of, I think, the general.
See, I don't want this revenue, this that we raise the rates on, to pay for this.
Okay, yeah, we'll have a separate account, ledger account, and we can show, we'll have to figure out how much comes in, how many accounts, times two fifty. Well, I guess we have to figure the numbers of thousands. Yeah, that, it might make it a little more interesting. But we'll, we'll have to figure out how much is attributable to the two and a half dollar increase, and then put that into a separate account.
Yes.
Separate ledger account.
It's not gonna go to pay, to any law.
Well, there's a consumption report that we can look at, and it'll tell you the number of water, and then you take that times two fifty, and that's gonna be your excess to swipe over.
Minus what the park uses for watering.
Well, yeah, it has consumption history per annum.
Minus landscape meters.
Yes, there can be total gallons coming out of water towers.
All right, we'll let you guys figure that out.
Yeah, it, we'll, we'll have, we'll talk about it. I don't have the answer.
Let's not let people have landscape meters anymore.
Well, that's too bad, 'cause I got two meters in my house for that.
So, do the bigger users get a break on their sewer also?
No.
Just their water?
Okay, page nine?
Okay, uh, solid waste, we're going to the new system. So I made some calculations. They may not be correct, but they match what our expenditures are going to be for solid waste disposal if we, let's say, use, um, Johnson County Refuge, using their rates.
Well, that's a big difference.
That's huge.
Yeah, it's, it, it is. Well, we were only selling garbage stickers. And they were collect, selling garbage stickers throughout the community and directly. So, we didn't see that, but whatever we were.
First, it's gonna be a money in, money out.
Yeah, that's exactly what it's gonna be.
That's the way it was with the stickers.
Yeah, that's what it's gonna be. It's not something we make a profit on.
But they'll come on the water utility bill.
Yes, this, this, that's the change, yes.
Why is it so high here, though?
Because now, now we're not doing the stickers.
Leslie and I had a discussion, and we, I used, half of the, half of the sales will be at the small container rate, and half will be at the large.
Is that kind of a crapshoot? How'd you get that?
That's exactly what it is. I mean, we had to come up with a mon- a, a number, but it doesn't matter that much, because whatever it is, it will go right back to the refuse company.
They were taking payments directly as well. Johnson County Refuge was also taking payments directly to them.
No.
Well, I thought.
They have private contracts, like, um, the, you know, the commercial stuff.
Stuff that stands so for Jack and Jill's and all that, that's going to them, that's not going through.
That's not going through us.
Right, and that won't, and that'll continue.
That's what I mean. So, so now it's all gonna go through us, that's why that number's.
Well, not, not anything from Jack and Jill.
They're not gonna be selling tickets anymore, so all of the.
All, all, yes.
Going through us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm just saying that.
Stormwater utility, that's an estimate of what our, we have more customers, and that's just an estimate. So it is generating a little more fund, uh, more revenue.
Know how many people reach the threshold of the water relief? Like, we give a discount after they use so much water.
Oh, Leslie knows.
It's not as, it's not, it doesn't happen as often as you think it would happen. Um, occasionally, Hames would have it, and I honestly have to, I'd have to look at their consumption, but it doesn't, it doesn't happen very often.
We lose doing it.
Yeah, I think Kroll maybe once in a while, maybe.
Curious how much money.
Plastic products occasionally, but yeah, it doesn't happen.
To me, that seems backwards. You use more water, you use more equipment, so it'll give you a break.
Volume discount?
It's water.
Well.
A little bit different.
All right, we'll talk about that another time.
No, but I'm just curious, I'd like to know, if we're gonna do a budget, how much we're losing on doing that? Because we're.
I can go back and look at the big ones.
People who have money for them to use more equipment, do more damage to our equipment by using more water and giving them a break. I mean, that's not how maintenance works. So I'm just curious how much we're losing by doing that, 'cause if it's a large portion of money, I.
What is, what is the usage break, do we know?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
It's like two hundred, after two hundred and fifty thousand, the rate's only like five dollars, five twenty-nine or something.
Maybe about a two dollar break?
That's why, depending on how much.
So when you get, so if you know you're gonna be using two hundred and fifty thousand, it's like, all right, let's go ahead and use five hundred thousand, because I'm getting it for five dollars.
Yeah. So you might lose double the water.
Right.
So you're gonna use double the wear and tear on our equipment. I'm just curious how much we actually lose on that. I mean, if it's a significant portion, I think we should get it back, or not do it.
I mean, it's a good point. I mean, theoretically, if you're trying to incentivize large companies, water users, to come into the community, I can see offering that. But at some point in time, you wanna taper off of that, and not just make an end deficit.
That was gonna be my other question, is how many do we have? I mean, if we have their amount, is it worth the risk of losing them to get back five thousand dollars?
Yes, good, good point, do some analysis on that.
It also encourages them to use, be a little more conservative on their water.
Yeah, that, that'd be my point, is if it's not there, maybe they should conserve water a little bit better.
Well, and I think with the mobile home, when they, a couple of years ago, they started metering.
I thought they were over three hundred thousand a few times.
Yeah, I, I said, I don't know that it happens all the time. Because their bill is actually sometimes lower than plastic products, so plastic products, I think, whatever it is that they make out there. Um, their bills can be five thousand dollars, and Hames will be three thousand. Um, but yeah, I can check, though, the, it's usually just two years. Like I said, the Hames did meter, and I think when they started to meter, then people became a little more conscious, because I think they're getting charged now, they're, they're charging them some sort of calculation. 'Cause before, yeah, they, they didn't, they didn't pay for it, so they just didn't conserve.
So they're getting charged the same amount everybody else is, two thousand?
I don't know what the, what the trailer.
No, I mean, the, for their, for their one-time bill, when they get built from the, they're, they're getting charged a seven, whatever.
Seven seventy-nine, like everyone else, commercial gets the same.
That's right.
Yeah, but until or fifty.
The bottom of page nine, non-departmental revenues, that's, all goes into general fund, the various types of, uh, permits, licenses, there's some, I thought there was some property tax on, that's on the next page, I guess. Just a, an assortment of various types of expenses.
Revenue.
Revenue, yes, sorry. Thank you. I, I guess I increased it a little bit, about a hundred and forty thousand. I think that's really because of transfers in. I have, I have a schedule of the transfers, but I don't remember what they are. Tort liability, down there on the bottom of page ten, that's an item that we're levying taxes for. Trust and agency, we're levying taxes for. Emergency tax fund, we're levying taxes for. Option tax, that's my estimate of what local option sales tax revenue will receive. Then my, I have transfers from, um, water, a little bit from wa- I think forty from water, forty-six from sewer, and then the TIF money as well as I think, well, I think it's TIF money, that's the transfers in. There may be something else, I just can't think of it right now.
That's part of that six hundred and seventy-seven thousand?
Yeah, yeah. I think, uh, I think a local option sales tax is a transfer of two hundred and something, and then our TIF transfer in.
Okay, so the last page then, is six point oh seven five, six million seventy-five thousand, right?
Yeah, and that should be on your page eleven, is it? Yeah, page eleven. Column J, line forty-three.
Or column, page twelve.
Column, uh, page eleven? Column J? Yeah, yeah, the, yeah, the summary is.
I like the summary of that.
Yeah, that's a little easier, yeah. Should be on there also, yes.
So is that what we have to work with?
That's my projection of revenue. It's not to say it's the best projection. I mean, it, it was, it was my best projection, but other people might have other ideas, too.
Well, I'm not gonna argue with it much.
I don't know how I could.
Well, you know, Jerry pointed out, I missed something, so it's nice to have other eyes look at it and, and see. I appreciate it, because if, if we miss it, that's not, if I miss it, and no one else catches it, then I'm kind of in the doghouse.
That's a hundred, hundred and some thousand dollar increase.
That's what I'm saying. Okay, so that's our revenue. Well, my guest expenses is the real meat of why we're here tonight. So. Expenditures. Anything
Well.
we need to get, we need to say before we get started on that, I guess?
I guess when I, Redmond and I met with the department heads, and we went through their budgets, and I did talk to them about things that, I would, I put everything in here that they have on their budget. I said, there are things I would probably take out eventually, if I'm allowed to. And for the police department, it would be the thirty thousand dollar vehicle set aside. I said, Mike, it's not that we are saying you can't have the money you need when you need to buy a vehicle next in the following year, but putting it in here might impair our ability if we have a commitment to put it aside.
Is this called a set aside?
Yeah, well, that's what it's, it's called.
Is it gonna be spent?
Well.
It's a set aside, isn't it?
Yeah, but we don't set anything aside for any department except the fire department. That's the, I guess, the issue. So if it, it doesn't mean anything, if it's there and not spent, the, the money is.
But if you spend it on some other project, then when he goes to use it, it's not going to be there.
So I just wanna clarify, I think at the last meeting, the direction was to bring resolutions to actually set up set asides, just like we do at the fire department. And I think that was council's direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we put the money in the budget to
Set it aside.
collect it. It's in the revenue, it's in our revenue, we use the revenue.
It's not, there's no guarantee that we're going to have revenue, I mean, we're gonna have.
What, that's six million dollars of revenue that we just got explained. We pull out thirty thousand and save it. So, we set it aside and we save it. Seems like logical, that's what we should do.
Yeah, but I think what.
We're already saying that's not this, with this, with this.
Cash flow can be the problem, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm saying, if we have it, if we have a commitment that we can't spend it, that's not.
Then we go, we gotta go borrow.
Yeah, and I would just.
Part of the two point eight that we.
Yeah, and I would.
Or we just come back to you and say, hey, this is the situation. And we need to dip into it. We'll put it back as soon as we get over the cash flow challenge of whatever.
It'll be up to us to decide.
Right.
I'd rather set it aside and.
It's a little bit more of another step, but it's transparent, and everybody knows what's going on when those situations come up.
And hope they don't come up.
Okay, so I guess we're disagreeing with you on this thirty thousand right now. Okay, so I guess we're disagreeing with you on this thirty thousand right now.
Well, it, it, it affects our fund balances at the end of the year. That's the stinker. It, it shows that we're actually spending the money now. So when we, if we get down to the end and anything that's called a set aside is not spent, then we, we will have, you know, if, we, in theory, we will have the money if we have all the revenue that we projected.
Does that not just roll over if it's?
No, no, it does not, Jerry.
See, I'm confused. You say if it's in our budget, we should be spent.
It, it's in the budget, well, the fire department, I guess, is a good example. They have it in their budget, they don't spend it. We have authorization to roll that money over into their reserve account. It's, we, we have, we have a reserve account that, uh, it's on the, I gave a, each, everybody a sheet, I think it should be on the, on the back sheet there, it's a yellow sheet. That, that shows the fund balance. I think it shows how much is in, those are cash balances. And it shows how much near the top.
With them?
Yes.
But if we don't put it on there, we don't levy for it, right?
Well, we, we can't levy for that directly. We can't levy for, um.
If we were to take thirty thousand dollars off, technically, it would come off what we would levy for, right?
No, no, because we, we levy for the items on the front here, but, but that's not a leaviable item.
Doesn't fit in the state allocated leaviable.
We're putting it in an account, but at some point, it's being levied from somebody.
It come, it'll come out of property tax, or it'll come out of general fund.
Yes, if we take that thirty thousand dollars off, though, would we, wouldn't it reflect on lowering what we're level for the general fund?
No, 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 it won't, because we aren't levying for that specifically. The, the things on this sheet here are the only ones we're levying taxes for. We get additional, we get some of the, some of these property taxes just go into the general fund, which the police department and fire department are general fund accounts. So they get money, whatever, whatever comes into the general fund, they get that. They, they get what is, they've budgeted.
Oh, no, I get that, but I'm just saying, but if you took thirty thousand dollars off, say it wasn't a set aside, say you took thirty thousand off salaries and wages, wouldn't it still affect what you're levying for?
No, no, no.
So we have a.
All dollars, not a specific levy, just overall funds.
No, it wouldn't.
Cause if I'm not asking for thirty thousand dollars, why would I need taxes?
But, well, we don't levy ta- we only levy taxes for the items here. And where it says regular general levy, that part of it goes to the fire department.
No, I get that, but if you're taking thirty thousand dollars off your overall budget, general levy, why would you need to levy more money for that property tax if you're not gonna put it anywhere? Right?
It will go into a fund balance. We, we, we.
Trying to figure out how, if we don't ask for the money, how do we get it? So I mean, we can't just.
We, we, we can levy, the eight-ten levy, we don't have to specify what, how we're gonna spend the money.
That was gonna be my question.
Yeah, yeah.
So how do we still get the money for it without putting it in the budget?
It, we call it the eight-ten levy. That's eight dollars and ten cents. We will levy for that, then we decide how we're going to spend it during the year. But it goes into the general fund, and then we say, alright, we have this, police car we wanna buy, we'll use it for that. And if we don't spend it, it will stay in the general fund, not spent, and then it can be used the following year.
Okay, that was kinda my question, is if we don't put it on the budget specifically, how do we still get that money? Cause we're talking about not putting it on there.
It's coming in this, this first, this top line.
I get it, I'm just saying for not putting it on the budget, I wanted to make sure we.
We still get the revenue.
Still get the revenue and the money for it.
Yeah, we do.
Cause if we don't put it on there, how is it?
Yeah.
To me, I would say if I don't put it on my budget, why would I ask for thirty thousand dollars if I don't put it on there? Is kinda my question, is you kinda confusing.
Well, I think we've decided.
We still get the money, but we don't have it on the budget.
We wanna keep it in here. We decided that, we're gonna keep it.
Yeah, no, I get it now, I'm just saying the way it is right now, it's not that way. Otherwise, it's making us like we're spending it.
Like I said, we'll, we'll set it up like resolutions, just like we did with the fire department, and it'd be, it'd be done the same way, so we got, we got that.
Well, each department should do that.
We're getting there, Joey.
I'm sorry.
We're gonna stay on.
We're getting ahead, okay?
Without gonna set.
That's the first time. That's the first time.
Now.
Don't usually get ahead, I'm usually behind.
Alright, just still, we're still on the police operation.
I don't know if, if you have questions about anything on there, the salaries and wages is at what is on your sheets, I gave you those three sheets. The first sheet is the current year's, uh, projections, yes. And it's under Mike Corahan, there's, does it have a that number? I guess I need to pull my sheets out here.
Number we're looking for?
The police salaries?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two hundred and eighty-six thousand?
Three, twelve, five, sixty-eight. Then the far right column. That's, that's where that number came from.
That's with the COLA?
Two and a half percent.
Okay.
So that was gonna be my question, I was waiting till we got here. So when you look at the one point six, which is what is coming from the government right now, is that's the cost of living, and we do two and a half. So when you look at the sheets, it seems to me that that seven cent increase, all the numbers besides the salary are the same. So what we have budgeted in the budget, as far as paying for set aside fireworks, all that stuff, is all the same. The seven cent tax increase is the difference between the one point six and the two point five.
Right.
The one point six is what the government's saying should be the COLA, and we, right now, we've built in a
Well, I didn't.
Twenty-nine percent.
When I did the budget, I didn't put anything in for the fringe benefit that we talked about. Uh, short-term disability, long-term disability, and we have a quote for accident death as well as life. That, I've got the the amount that I received some quotes for, it's around eight thousand dollars. So the one percent is about that.
Okay, that was my question.
So it's, it's covered that way.
Two and a half is kinda gonna cover our extra benefits that were.
Yeah, now, I, I guess what I totaled here was about seven thousand. So the one percent is, I thought, about eight point eight percent, I thought, so. Or nine, it's actually nine tenths of a percent, or.
That's, yeah, that's an addition.
That'd be an addition, because this is a two and a half percent on your salary, benefits are on top of that.
Right.
But
He's trying to cover that extra.
We have, we have money in our fund balance, if you wanna look at your yellow sheet again, um, line, okay, um, trust and agency benefit. Uh, the second yellow line says special revenue, then it's road use, then one twelve, trust and agency. We had a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars there. Part of that was because I didn't realize the workers' compensation insurance was supposed to come out of that. So that's why I made that thirty-five thousand dollar tr- transfer that you folks approved. So that balance of a hundred and thirty-five, go down thirty-five, that's a hundred and sixty thousand. We're going to get more taxes this year for for fringe benefits. If we.
Because we can levy for it.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. We have a balance there, and.
We should keep in mind that we're also going to be doing long-term and short-term disability for the first time. And even though we have a balance, that's going to be a cost that we're going to incur over, from here on out.
Well, the question.
I wouldn't get too excited about that balance, because we're incurring a brand new program too.
We're getting, we're covering that.
Right.
We have, I'd never even budgeted for the, the two point six, or two point five would cover that seven thousand.
That additional.
Or we don't have to levy for it, we just take, have the expense, and it'll reduce our, our, our fund balance by seven thousand dollars. We don't have to levy for that. If we.
I don't know about her or your question, but.
No, that was my question, was, he answered it.
Okay.
Cause I was kinda questioning, not that I didn't agree with it, why we have the government coming out and saying one point six should be a cost of living upgrade, but yet we were doing two and a half. He answered it.
Decided that completely.
No, but he answered it by saying going to the two and a half's gonna pay for the additional fringe benefits that we're gonna give.
Yeah, if we take it out.
Cause if we don't do the two and a half, essentially what he's saying is we're gonna have to take seven thousand dollar hit every year, because we didn't levy for it. So that's seven cents.
But, but we, we do have a reserve. We have a substantial reserve that.
Yes, I get that, but it's still, that reserve's gonna take seven thousand dollar hit.
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct, Nick.
I mean, it's, take one ninety-five, take seven thousand out of it, and you got a long time until it runs out, but you don't wanna operate that way. I was asking essentially, that seven cent increase came from that, cause everything else was the same. I was wondering why we did this.
Well, I, I didn't know what we were gonna do, so I figured, well, what the heck, put it in there. This, this city is saving seventeen thousand dollars this year in fringe benefits. We
We added.
We.
Well, I, I just would, my recommendation is one point six, so if the council wants to do something different than that, I also looked at the information that you guys gave the last go-around, and one point six, um, was the place to start consensus-wise. So that's my two cents.
That's where we were at. I guess that's just you and my conversation.
Well, yeah, that's.
We have one point six plus the fringe benefits, or whatever you wanna do.
Which I, I would say the reserve is what that's for.
Now, I guess I don't know what, 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 does the council wanna think about what to do here? I mean, we've got time, but we need to have, I need some input on.
So the, the two point, if we're looking at the two point five plus the fringe benefits?
The two point five is, it can maybe, you can look at it a couple of ways. One point six percent salary increase, there'll be a fr- fringe benefit increase of the short-term, long-term disability, that'll cost approximately seven to eight thousand dollars. That would be included in the two point six.
Two point five?
Two point five, I'm sorry, I got.
Well, that doesn't come up, that really doesn't show up then in any.
Yes, it does, cause that's the seven cents.
That's the seven cents, or six cents.
Or six cents.
Well, it's, I guess.
That's the six cents change.
That's the only number that's different. So when you look at the two point five and the one point six, the only number that's different.
Or we go with one point six percent raise and get that seven thousand dollars out of.
Out of the reserve, we could do that.
Don't raise taxes, though.
And we don't raise taxes.
Don't raise taxes.
That's our choice.
And we'd be able to keep the budget out of there.
I, I think the other thought, and I'm thinking down the road here, is we realize that we have Cedar Johnson Road coming, Johnson-Cedar Road coming, and that's likely going, even if we use TIF and do all the things, that's still likely going to push us into a point where we're gonna have to consider tax increases. So I would be more conservative now, when we don't necessarily have to use it and prepare ourselves in a year or two years to have a tax increase for that major capital project. Kinda like we had to kinda do with Covey when Covey came online, so.
Right.
That's, that's my thought.
My, my thought would be is, we need to figure out what year we wanna do that project, is it two years, five years? Then we can, then we can start.
I was hoping we could do a little bit this year and kinda wean our way into it, is what I was kinda hoping. If we could scratch out some sort of design, early design this year, if we could get it.
Yeah, I mean, two years is kind of aggressive number.
Yeah, very aggressive.
We wouldn't be able to do it in two years anyway, because they're gonna be finishing local road.
Well, they won't be that far, no.
We're supposed to go to Oasis next year, and then from Oasis to Cedar Johnson year after. Okay, we're getting sidetracked.
I'm just giving you my thoughts, so you know where I'm coming from.
Where were we?
Well, um. You know, everyone.
That's essentially where the, yeah.
Do we need to make a decision right now, one point six, two point five?
That's coming.
That's gonna have to be in a resolution.
I'm fine with seven cents.
So all the budgets, all the budgets we talked about, and then they gave a represent, presentation on it, that's all covered. The only difference right now is the two point, is the COLA. So even with all the increase in costs that Melissa asked and back and forth, I mean, that's all covered, right now, tax raises. The cost of living adjustment. That's the only number that changes, line sixty-five.
So we've been at thirteen oh nine?
Yes.
Six cents. Six cents for not much. Pretty minimal.
Yeah, but it's six cents this year, seven or eight cents next year.
Next year, well, next year.
We wanna do Cedar Johnson Road.
Next year might be a tougher year.
Yeah.
Because I'm afraid our ta- our, um, health insurance is gonna go up next year.
And it doesn't include.
Yeah, but next, also gotta remember, next year, we're gonna get a new census too.
I think the new census might help us, so I hate to count on that.
But also at the same time.
I, I don't know when the new numbers will be available and impact us, I don't know.
And that would just help us in road use area, not necessarily in anywhere else.
It's the only problem.
Cedar Johnson Road.
Yeah.
My only issue with saying just six cents is it's also an additional two fifty in water, and additional potentially three bucks in garbage.
Yeah, but the garbage is gonna pay for itself. That's not an increase in, in revenue.
No, I'm.
Expense to revenue.
Yeah, I was gonna say expense to the taxpayer.
That's what I meant. So we're doing a three dollar of, or I don't remember what we ended up being, like total in a year increase to a person, that's gonna be what? I don't remember what it was, three hundred bucks or something, and then water, who knows what that is, and then, then you just toss an additional six percent tax on, so I mean, it's not just. If it was just six cents, then maybe, but we're throwing an additional five fifty a month at people.
Okay, so without Colton being here, kinda like him to weigh in on this too. Not sure where he would stand.
No, I'm fine with that, I'm just stating.
Can we move on tonight without making that decision?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I don't, things are in pretty good shape in terms of what needs to be entered. Now, we need input from you to what needs to be changed. That's, so I don't feel.
I thought this was just informational anyway.
It is.
So.
Yeah, we're not making any decisions really.
Only full-time employees get the new benefit?
Well, that is kind of a discussion, because when I spoke to Wellmark about putting the fire chief on our health insurance program, she said, we can do that, but we have to offer health insurance to all part-time people. We don't have to have, the, the city can say, for the fire chief, we're going to pay one hundred percent of your, or seventy percent, as, as we do for all employees. Pay seventy percent of your benefit for the part-time people. We can say, you, you can purchase health insurance, but you have to pay one hundred percent, or whatever the council wants to do. We don't have to have the same policy for all part-time employees, I was told.
We just have to be able to, we have to be able to.
We have to have a written policy that says.
Offer that they pay a hundred percent of it.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm repeating what, what the Wellmark lady told me.
Oh, but you can offer it, but they pay all of it?
Yeah, if, if, you know, the city can have different policies. Yeah, if, if, is, you know, the city can have different policies for different classes of employees.
So, these with a line under their name, those are the ones that do not take our benefits?
Oh, I, uh, shoot here, I gotta.
No, the number of that is the compensation they get for not.
So like my name, where it says thirty-eight, sixty-seven?
Right, you don't.
You don't take it.
You don't take it.
No, that, that, those lines just are, are where the last person in that group.
Home.
But like.
That, we have the clerk department first, the police department, public.
Yeah, that's the compensation, they don't take it.
But see.
So Leslie doesn't take it.
Yeah, where, where, in the column, right, if, if you're talking about column. Compensation in lieu of health insurance. I receive compensation in lieu of health insurance. Everyone in that column does. Take half the premium. Uh, I did find out that Walcott gives their employees who don't take health insurance. One hundred percent of the premium, which is a pretty big gift.
But we only pay seventy percent?
Yeah, they pay one hundred percent.
So they pay a hundred, so it's a policy.
They pay one hundred percent.
They pay a hundred percent of family and a hundred percent to the single.
Yeah.
So whether you take it or not.
Yeah, that's a, it's, I, I call it generous.
Well, they've got the lotto America out there in a Walcott truck stop.
We have a national park that doesn't pay for that.
Well, they don't have any debt either.
Not that I can find.
I mean, the city doesn't, so that's nice.
All right, where are we at then?
Well, okay, now, uh, the trust and agency, that, that's. The fringe benefits. Uh, and the fire department, those are what Kevin gave me. I did put for Kevin, I put under group insurance, that's paying his, the city paying his health insurance. So, at seventy percent. Like all other. That's under trust and agency group insurance, twelve thousand, nine forty-one.
Is that assuming he is taking family coverage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Is that part of the two point five, or is that an?
The two point five, I think the.
I don't think so.
Or is that just covered in the?
That's just a number, the.
That's.
I'm just saying that that part of the seven, six cent increase, or is that?
Well, it's, it's in the numbers. It's, it's in the numbers. I mean, it's in our budget. It's, it's, I think I levied for it. I think I levied for it.
Okay.
I think, I think that's what I.
Didn't do six cents? That, that's about six, six cents right there, I think, we talked about once.
One percent of one hundred, one cent is going to raise fourteen hundred dollars roughly, whatever, yeah. Fourteen, a hundred, fourteen hundred and thirty-seven dollars, one cent. That's what one cent will raise. So, I, I don't know if you have any questions about the fire department budget, but that, that, that is essentially what, what Kevin proposed.
It's fine.
Building inspections, I budgeted the same salary as last year. He didn't go over that. So I, I budgeted the same. He's actually quite a bit down from the previous year. Animal control, I did not budget any differently, three thousand dollars. Now, maybe, maybe it should be a little more, I don't know. But it's not a significant sum.
One of the last.
Pardon?
Three years you haven't made it to three thousand, so.
Sometimes they, they spend a little more for, uh, the, the veterinary hospital hasn't, doesn't bill us regularly. The way they could, for whatever reason, so I can't say anything. Roads and street, this here on page three is general fund money. And. That, that will come out of the general fund on page four, under road use tax. All those expenses are funded by road use tax. Now, it shows a three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar expense, but we're only going to get. I think I budgeted three hundred and ten thousand of revenue. So, there's gonna be a drawdown in the fund balance for what these expenses are here.
That might be a good place to have a TIF asking. Create a TIF asking in December to reimburse us some of that money.
I know you're against. That was for which one?
Any of these that are in a TIF district, any of the streets on the east side. I know Gordon's against that, but I'm, I think it's a good place we could recoup some money. We got, we got projects that would help us pay for some of that.
A reimbursement resolution?
Well, not right, what, what, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it here.
Will we have to do a reimbursement resolution?
At, at some point, if it goes into a TIF, but we haven't. I think we wanna talk about it and.
Not right now, but.
No, no, but I mean, we.
I know Joey's, um, so how much is?
The fund balance for the road use fund right now is. Hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars at the end of December. We were going to move some of that to pay for the bridge, College Street Bridge. We need to see how much we have available for that. I was hoping we could whittle that bridge debt down considerably by June thirty.
You talking First Street and College Street?
Yeah, Second Street and College.
Second Street and College.
Yeah, that part of it is. We're, we having, having some trouble financing, and that was one portion.
What did we ask for TIF, TIF on that? Twenty-five, fifty thousand?
Twenty-five thousand, we.
This year and twenty-five thousand next year?
I think. We asked for. Uh, either twenty-five or, either seventy-five or fifty thousand for next year's TIF. I'm thinking it was seventy-five.
Okay, so once again.
That, that's to pay off.
Struggling to get that paid for.
Well, we borrowed.
Do a TIF at, we can ask for TIF.
Well, we did, we did mon- did some portion, we borrowed a hundred thousand, a hundred and seven thousand from general fund. Last year. No, it was in December of, 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 yeah, just a few months. Yeah, in this, in this fiscal year, we borrowed a hundred and seven thousand with the idea that we're gonna get twenty-five thousand. From that back next, next year. And then there was something we borrowed in the previous year that we're going to get back that, that year also.
So what do we owe on first, or College and Second? We go through this all the time and it changes every time.
Yeah, well, it, it, it fluctuates. We, some, we, uh, right now, it had a balance of around five hundred, a negative five hundred thousand. We're going to move dollars from the College Street Bridge project to that. That'll pay off a portion of it. We talked about using some road use tax money.
Okay, how much is that portion?
At the end of December, there was three hundred thousand left. I don't think it's that much. I haven't received final bills.
So we need to come up with about two hundred thousand.
Well, it, it may be even a little more than that, is what I'm guessing. I don't, I don't know. We have to.
Road use tax money to come in, is that why?
Well, we, we have to resolve some issues with the College Street Bridge and the state Department of Transportation. They have to go through the bills and decide how much they're going to reimburse us yet. We, they withheld from us thirty thousand dollars, which we withheld from Taylor Construction. That was the, normally it's five percent, but there was the thirty thousand limit. They also withheld from us fifty thousand dollars, or five percent, which amounts to about fifty thousand dollars. They owe us, the state owes us eighty thousand dollars. I hope we get all of that.
And why, why'd they withhold that?
As the retainage.
Yeah, retainage.
For.
For making sure we get.
For.
Retainage, we withheld the thirty thousand as retainage from.
Sure.
But they, they want us to, they wanna make sure we do our part, so they withhold fifty thousand dollars from us.
We withhold ten percent, they withhold fifteen percent or stuff like that.
Well, it's.
So, so we're withholding thirty thousand from.
Taylor. That, that's a payout we'll have to do yet.
Withholding fifty from us.
So they're withholding a total of eighty from us, the thirty plus the fifty.
I guess we're a fiduciary agent, and so that's our, that's our piece of protecting the project from their standpoint.
Is that, do we ever get that back?
Yeah, we'll get it back as soon as they, they.
That's why he's having a hard time figuring out what's the final payout.
Cause they're not telling us what they're gonna give us the money back.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm hoping it'll be this fiscal year.
We haven't gotten the final bills and stuff either.
Kinda like we're moving out of an apartment that we think we're gonna get our deposit back, but we may not know, we may not get all our deposits back.
At rate?
Pardon, yes.
Rate was for a million dollars?
Yes.
And we received a million dollars minus the eighty?
Yeah, we've received all but about eighty-five thousand.
Okay.
So, I'm hoping we get a complete eighty-five thousand yet. That will be available, well, we're gonna, some of it goes to Taylor, but some of it can, will be available to move to College Street and Second Street.
So we only owe Taylor thirty.
Yes, that, that.
Waiting for eighty, maybe eighty-five.
So really, we're only gonna get fifty-five?
So that's why he doesn't really know what.
And, and I don't know if Dave has any more bills left. I hope he doesn't.
There's V and K out there.
V and K engineer.
Yes, yes, I.
Yeah, he pretty great, he's pretty great, he ought to be doing it for free.
Does that explain that, Jody?
So a couple of months ago, we had this discussion.
Yes.
That you threw at us that we were gonna be about five hundred thousand short, and Colton and I about fell out of our territory.
Well, it's between three and four hundred max, I will say that, but we, we think.
In the next breath, it was, no, we're only about a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand.
That's if we are able to pay some off with College Street Bridge, or pardon me, um, the road use tax. And I have to, have to look at my notes, but it's. Until we get all of our bills in, I won't know exactly what we have left. That, that's the, the stinker.
Okay, so my point is, what started this discussion, what did start that discussion?
You wanted to use TIF money to?
We already agreed to use fifty thousand in TIF money over two years to help pay for Second Street and College Street.
Well, well, no, actually, we got like, uh, I'm thinking, uh, more than that, Jerry, uh.
Seventy-five maybe.
We, we get, well, we borrowed, we got a hundred and seven thousand this year, and I was thinking we got a hundred thousand last year.
TIF?
In TIF. Now, that may have, not, no, not TIF. It was an inter-fund loan that we, I think we did. Ask, ask for TIF money.
To pay that off.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think it was that much.
I, I have to look at those two TIF requests.
Well, my point is, I thought that was a little too small, and I still think it's too small. We got an opportunity to do a TIF asking. Help us with some of that debt.
But didn't we already have to have our TIF in?
It went.
Do another TIF asking in December, we can, that's one of the projects.
That the TIF we used was right up to the point where we asked anymore, we were in a lose mode.
Well, that's what Maggie.
There's a, there's a fine line there, and there is.
We need to look at that.
Our ratios.
Pretty sure Maggie already pushes up to that line.
Mm-hmm.
Our ratios.
From what I was told, that we've.
Well, that's what we need to find out.
That's what she said.
Where that ratio, I, I think eighty percent's too high, we're, again, we were at eighty percent for a year there.
I was under the understanding we already pushed up to that line.
We did, but property values went up.
A hundred thousand.
That went, so our ratio went way down.
Our, our debt limit, yeah, our debt limit is much, much better shape, but that doesn't mean one gone borrowed.
Down too, we've been paying down it. So on that.
So you can push a little bit more, we just don't know how many.
Little bit.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's move on, what are we?
Well, okay, the light, okay, trust and agency for road use, that's all levied for.
So that's why that's a hundred and fifty thousand higher.
Which number?
The roads and streets.
Okay, look at, yeah, it's higher, if we go back up to look at the road use tax portion. We have about a forty-five thousand dollar increase in capital improvements for streets. Matt can tell you which streets he has budgeted for, but that, that's a substantial increase in. In, in, in street.
Well, that's a water project on College Street.
Well, it doesn't cover water, it just covers the street project and orange.
Orange street.
And there's concrete projects that are listed in that.
Like you do every, every year.
There was concrete, there was steel coat, um, concrete at the shop by the soul shed and some concrete patches.
Yeah.
I mean, the big one is a East Orange project, and there is some cushion in there for that. We don't necessarily have to spend all that out.
Let me tell you, man, we got a letter tonight, um, some residents on the alley. Want us to pave that alley that, that be killed.
No.
So I'm just throwing it out there.
We are not paving a damn alley if we can't pave our streets.
Okay, so now if we got, so we gotta discuss on it tonight, we're talking, is that all we need to discuss on that tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there anything that you, well, you can just think about what you wanna do with this budget and, and let me know, I guess. I, I won't make any changes until I, I hear from what the council, results of the council's decisions are. Uh, street lighting is next page, it's down a little bit, our.
Isn't that gonna, does, um, Covey Park?
That's not under street lights.
That's not?
No, that would be under park expense, park, park utilities. If it's out on, light out on the street would be.
Okay, but we've also added the new KLM or whatever.
That'll probably.
Road.
That'll be, there'll be bills for those.
And we got the College Street Bridge that has lights on it now, well, they're not on, but it has lights to be turned on.
Those.
So we usually spend about thirty-two to thirty-four, five thousand a year.
Are you budgeting forty?
He's budgeting thirty-seven.
So it's, I, I don't know if it's.
We have no idea.
No, I mean, it's, it's a.
We have no idea how much we get for each light, how much we.
I can look at that. I, I, we've got some bills that you can look at, Jerry, I, I, and.
And do we know, do we know, I know every time a light goes out in town, if it's the old, uh, light, they're changing them out to an LED light. So that should be helping us.
No, it doesn't help us.
Still twenty-five.
Still twenty-five bucks a light.
So they're charging.
They get the, they get the savings.
Okay, so they're charging us for every light we have in town, they're charging.
Twenty-five bucks.
Okay. That answers that question.
I went that, I went through that with one of them, and he said, no, that's our money.
Then aren't.
Doesn't that mean?
Isn't your subdivision getting light?
Four or five, I think. Oh, four or five, and what's done?
It'd be up a little.
Yeah.
We'll have more revenue too, than to pay for those.
On page five, we have the library expenses. Pretty much, I guess if you wanna compare what, what the revenue is to that, you're welcome to do that. Um, but I, like I said, I didn't change anything.
So parking wreck's a bigger number, just because we're shifting things around from-
Partly.
Cemetery and water, paying water and-
But see, cemetery should go down forty-six thousand.
I don't-
Roughly.
And it only went down thirty-nine thousand.
Yeah, but did it all come out of cemetery?
No, it didn't.
I would, I would guess it did not, but-
It was down forty.
Matt?
We, we made changes.
Some came out, but some just, there was changes to, I mean, we, some that came out of cemetery, some that moved in the parking wreck, but then parking wreck had more expenditures because of Cubby Park and other things like that. But did you take it all out of your cemetery, and not any, not any other ones? Well, yeah, I took some, so some of our mowing was coming out of like sewer, water. Yeah. So I pulled some of it out of there, so some that got moved in the parks, some in the cemetery.
Yeah. That's why it looks like cemetery only went down so far. We took out some others.
Is in overall difference in budget, and we want fifty-two, or am I, looked like ninety-eight, but neither of us, it was fifty-two overall.
Okay, um, where are we at? Total Cemetery, one oh seven, Town Hall.
We're levying for those expenses there.
Guess we're not gonna paint it this year, or maybe next year we need to paint it again.
I, I guess I-
Are you painting inside or outside?
Eaves.
Outside. Did you just paint that?
Yeah.
Did you, watered down paint, or what?
Wow, who'd have brought that up?
Well-
Just scraped a lot of old paint off.
That's in what, five years ago, do I have?
Uh, yeah, I was still, I think I first became the mayor then.
Community and cultural development, this is various events. Hoover Hometown Days, the, um, Christmas lights are in here, hanging those, buying those. Um, concerts, we don't have concerts, haven't had concerts recently. Christmas Pass is in there. I guess you need to think about what you want for those expenses.
I do, I do have a comment on the inflatables.
Uh-huh.
Um, I know in the past, we've always done that for free. I think this will be a good year that we start a wristband deal.
I brought that up last year, and, go ahead.
It's on park service property.
Nope.
I don't believe we can, I don't, we can't charge-
I thought that, oh, part of them are on park service.
Right, the ones on the street.
And maybe they'll start donating us some money, so they can, we can pay for it then.
Could there be a way we could charge for what's on the street?
Um, could be, might be a logistic nightmare for me, but-
Well, maybe we charge the five dollar wristband, and they can play on both.
Why can't we put the booth on the street?
Cause they're physically on-
And sell a wristband?
It, it's still that we'd be charging, we'd be requiring the people that are on the, it's still the-
Spark property.
Yeah. I can get clarification on that, but I'm pretty sure that's the rule, which is why we, we used to charge for the activities. We used to, years and years ago, um, when it was still separate, and, um, I'm pretty sure that we can't though. So, unless we change the location.
We can move it down First Street, or something like that.
Because last year, we had an inflatable on Main Street, and then we also had them in the park.
Yes.
So why couldn't we charge for the one that's on Main Street? So you're charged for five dollars for there, but-
We could.
You don't get in that one unless you got a, or a wristband.
Yeah, but that one, you can still write on the rest of them, but we're gonna charge you for that one.
You could say that.
We could, it's difficult to, to do that, but we could.
Okay, another discussion. All those inflatables.
Tell me where it could go.
And then we don't have, we don't have, that's such an, um, thing.
It's just, it's just-
Crow rating makes sense, yeah.
They get a lot of enjoyment at five dollars.
Um, advertising, we got four thousand for advertising like every year. I think, I wish we could add, do that baseball advertising we did, at one time. I thought it brought people into town for Hoover Days. Anybody know how much that cost?
Uh, it was around five thousand dollars for-
That was five thousand alone?
I think so.
I was saying it's twenty-five, but-
No, it was like five thousand we spent on-
It was for all, pretty much all-
It was for those.
Almost all summer, was it?
Yeah, every Cubs game, yeah.
I think that was around five, I, I'll have to look, Roger.
We could probably get a cheaper package somewhere else, or not do the Cubs games. But get a cheap, yes.
She came in after the fact, after Matt had left and offered us a deal for about half as much, so I'm pretty sure that we could probably negotiate that down.
I'm surprised he did that, cause he's a Cardinals guy. Pay that much for a Cubs game. Okay.
Probably kill him inside.
But that's not enough, with four thousand, doesn't seem like enough, for other advertising we have to do.
But that's advertising for the whole year.
The whole year.
That's not just for Hometown Days.
I know, but there is-
It's, yeah, it, it, it seems to come up short.
That'll disappear fast.
It seems to come up short, but I, I guess it's up to you folks to think about what you want, want to have there.
I don't know, I don't feel like upsetting the apple cart right now. I'll just, that could be another grand. Did we put any advertising in the Hoover Hometown Days budget, to pass, in the past?
Well, just, just what's here, this is all. This, this covers Hoover Hometown Days, and if we spend advertising for other time parts of the celebration, Christmas past, or, uh-
Let's just leave it there, and we'll, we'll work with it, that's what I say. All right, move on.
Economic Development General Fund is dues mostly. I do have, and I didn't calculate, I just used forty-eight thousand again for building incentive pay. Those are the, that's what I calculated last, for the current year, and we're only at twenty thousand. We'll probably have, I don't know if we'll have that much again in April, or not.
Well, April or May.
Yeah, it-
We'll find out.
Yeah.
So, wha, wha, uh, whatever we've been paying the park service for, seven thousand five hundred?
Well, there was a time when-
Oh, that was for the Rat Pack.
Blacksmith, Blacksmith, uh-
Was that for the Rat Pack?
No.
No, it was for the-
No, that was Blacksmith's work.
Oh.
Oh, I thought it was for the, which, concerts that we-
Might have been that too, but I think this particular one is-
I think there was, Matt and Pete had a, kind of an agreement that they would fund each other's projects, I think. I think that, I think that's what it was. But we haven't budgeted that for two, well, I guess we budgeted-
Half of that seventy-five hundred was for the Blacksmith, and the other half was for the park.
Culture.
Guides to give the tours of the historic buildings.
Oh.
Downtown. So they came off the park and took guided tours downtown.
We had to pay for that, cause the park service couldn't pay for it.
Yeah, it's not in the park anymore.
Okay, they couldn't pay for it.
So then, why do we have to buy a stage of?
Well, I don't have anything budgeted for the National Park Service there, so it's- Dues Main Street, ten thousand, um, and building incentive, I've got forty-eight thousand there for next year, I'm hoping it's enough.
Didn't we set a lim, we set a limit now, didn't we, for so, so many houses?
Yeah, so many houses, but-
But we still got the houses that are-
Yeah, yeah.
And-
What are you pissed at, Roger?
Yeah, um, do you have any kind of an idea how many of her actually coming in? I know at one time you were asking about going after them, and it's like, I guess my point is, if you don't, if you can't remember to come in and get your, your rebate, then that's not our fault.
Well-
They could invite it.
The paper, it's in the paper, Leslie puts in the building permit.
Do we know how many are, are most, all of them coming into?
I, I talked to some people, and they said they were waiting until they got some substantial amount, in essence. They didn't care if they got five hundred or six hundred dollars in the first year or two, but when they got a thousand or two thousand dollars per payment, then they'd come in, so. And it doesn't take five years-
No.
For those houses to pay, to reach the five thousand.
Right.
So.
Three to four, depending on-
Yeah.
Okay, those numbers look good to me.
Nothing was budgeted for revolving loan fund. We've got a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in there, and I have not budgeted for it, because we were using that to, uh, fund sidewalk projects.
We don't have to put it in the budget to-
Well, we do, if we want, if you want to spend it, we need to put it in the budget. It would just come out of the fund balance, but I, I, that, that's why we're having this meeting, because if there are things you want to do with that, we can put dollars in there. But it, it, it would, there would be no tax dollars involved, it's just comes out of the fund balance.
We're not planning a sidewalk project this year, so I guess. Is that all that, that fund is for, sidewalk?
Well, we, you, no, it's economic development, I guess, um, but it's, it's only to be loaned out, so people can pay it back. That was my understanding.
All right, leave that alone.
Mayor and council, I didn't change anything there by much. I guess I added two hundred and fifty dollars for office supplies. I don't know if you want any more for training or mileage, now's the time, we can add it.
The mayor would like a new computer sometime. If I wanna be the mayor for a while, I want a new computer.
When you have for reelection?
I don't know.
Teas, I think all our computers-
Not like I use it a lot, but I think all our computers are getting a little dated, so I just imagine yours must be pretty bad.
But then you can put theirs, they can do it, they use it all the time.
I'll build you one out of my spare parts.
Uh-huh.
Better than what's gonna be in there, I can tell you that much.
I'll get one of theirs. Hand me down.
Okay, hand me down.
Okay. Keep going, Gordon.
Okay.
We gotta wrap this up, and make-
Trust and agency is just benefit, clerk and treasurer, treasurer, um, there's not a, a lot in there. I'm a little concerned that our auditing expense is going to be short, but we haven't been billed for the audit that they did last fall. We haven't seen our report yet, so, we haven't been billed for it, but-
Well, it'll come.
It'll, it'll be here before June thirty. I guess the bulk of the increase is just in the way we distributed salaries.
You own a general fund?
Yeah, yeah, general fund, yeah. I think some of Leslie and Redmond and my own expenses were charged to other funds, and we took them back, and we put them into this one. Legal services didn't really change. That's mostly Kevin, and, uh, then the estimate for the legal publications. On page eleven, we have our debt service, and I think the one, the one million five thousand plus the sinking fund would equal the balance on that budget sheet. That final page of the budget sheet should be to, the total. But there's the breakdown of the, uh, the payments. TIF, that, that's what we requested, and-
So, what's our, what's our payment, loan payment then, this one point oh six?
Okay, this, this requested budget, that is for general obligation portion. There'll also be a sixty thousand dollars for the sewer and wa, well, it's water revenue bonds. We pay sixty thousand dollars out of that, so our total is about one million sixty-five thousand next, next year. This year, it's gonna be a little higher, one, one million. Well, we've, we've only spent eight million, or eighty-eight thousand, but we're gonna spend another million on June, on June one.
Where are you at?
Uh, bottom of page eleven.
Oh.
Well, I was, I was looking at the bond debt, the general obligation debt service, and those are the-
Head fast enough.
Bonds listed on the left, and what the principal and interest is. Principal at the top, interest at the bottom. TIF, those are what we requested. And we expect to get that. Um, these are the expenses on page twelve for capital projects. Under Peterson Valley Park, I put fifty thousand dollars for equipment for park, for Melissa. I don't know what all you want beyond that, and that should leave a balance.
Where are you at, I'm sorry?
Peterson Valley Park, meaning Cubby Park.
Yeah, yeah, that was the name, that was put on the project a long time ago. I guess here's where I budgeted money for downtown East redevelopment. Seventy-five thousand. We have a hundred and fifty thousand budgeted this year, but we haven't spent anything.
We spend might be too low.
For next year, well, oh-
How much is a grant?
Well, seventy-five.
Oh, the money we have, fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Yeah.
That's the grant we waited all summer to get?
Yeah.
We find a guy?
Yeah.
Do we have a grant?
Yep.
Yeah.
Did they get the money?
No, we have to spend the money, and then we-
Now, what is that for?
The Derelict Building.
Send document, send some documentation into-
That's for the, the Derelict Building Grant. Tear, breaking up the concrete.
The concrete, that, that, that's when-
Tearing down that building, well, that only costs us a dollar though. We should get credits for what Dustin Anderson should have weighed, his steel. We should get credit for that, somehow. When he took that building out of there, he's supposed to weigh it, and give us the, uh, scale tickets.
Hmm, I don't know if he did that.
He will, he's-
I think it's, is it, is it put up already?
No, but he should have waited awfully.
I, I don't know what, what-
I'll call him and see where he's at.
Yeah, check, check on that.
But anyway, so what have we got in?
There's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar fund balance in that fund right now.
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty.
Does that include the fifty of the grant, or that doesn't include?
No, that doesn't include, that's just cash in the bank. No, that doesn't include, that's just cash in the bank.
That's been sitting there for four years. So this summer, we're gonna, we're gonna pay Barnhart to get rid of the crush up for uh. Break up the concrete. That's what the seventy-five thousand is for.
Yeah, do you think it's gonna be more than seventy-five thousand?
It will if we crush it. If we hide.
We don't know what it's gonna crush. Well, I guess. For one, we don't, we don't know how much concrete's in there, so it's really hard to say how much it's gonna cost to crush it because we don't know how much we're gonna crush. Until he gets it all out. So it's just a guesstimate of how much. I think he had a guesstimate of how much he thought was in there for concrete.
He did.
But he didn't know what was in the silos. I mean, there's just a lot of unknowns, so. Till, until he gets it all out and we see the pile, then you can say, well, this is about how much we have and then the crusher can tell us how much that's gonna be to crush it.
Once the mountains are there, it'll be more definitive how much will be spent to break it down.
Right.
But that seventy-five we've got right here is just, that's to pay Bruce. I didn't know what exactly.
I mean, that's what I estimated. He asked me and that's what I estimated.
Yeah, I, I don't.
So, I mean, if we need to make it higher, we probably, we probably need to do that, but just so you know, we don't get paid unless the concrete leaves the site. Wade, I mean, we don't get reimbursed, I should say.
So, we have to accrue the debt, have it crushed.
Right.
So, I was talking to Bruce today about that. There are some projects, I still have a project that could possibly use it. I'll have him look into finding a crusher that can get us the spec that we need for under road use. Because the meadows could also use the same rock. If it can pass the, the spec that is needed to go underneath the road. So.
We may be spending that money this summer then.
We better be spending that money.
We gotta claim, he wants it, we got.
Other, otherwise it's gonna have a rock pile that's gonna have to be hauled somewhere and be used up and. It's gonna take a lot of driveways to use up a rock pile.
Can we move that whole hundred and fifty over there Gordon?
Well, we should probably leave a little bit to spend this year if, I don't know how much. I don't know what expenditures we're going to have yet in this fiscal year.
If we don't spend it this year, doesn't it?
We don't.
We'll roll over and then.
That would roll over.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, if.
Now, wait a minute now, we just had this discussion of the set aside thing. It can't be, if it's not in the budget, we can't spend it.
This is a capital project, it's a little different. Just, so let me remind you, I think our deadline is sometime in spring.
What deadline?
The deadline for our grant. We got the extension, I think it was to spring, so.
So what's the stipulation behind the grant?
Well.
Get the asbestos removed, get the buildings removed.
We get so much money per ton of rock off the site.
As a credit.
Right. So if we don't think it's going to be, if we think it's gonna be there in the summer. Then I gotta go back and ask for another extension because the rock won't actually leave the site. It might be crushed. But it might not leave the site. So that.
So is the grant all for just the rock or is it for the sheds too?
That's where we, it's for sheds too, but that's where we made.
For a weight, weight deal?
Based on the way everything lined up, it was very, very, very minimal money for sheds. It's the rock where we actually get to that fifty thousand number.
But the grant may pay for Bruce's expense. Which would be done, might be done in a couple of months.
Probably should have a conversation.
Finish out the grant.
Yeah, they have a new coordinator, so maybe I should talk to her and say, hey, this is.
Should get that figured out.
Kind of deal we're dealing with here and what can you do?
Yeah, get that figured out.
More than likely the rock won't be off there by.
In spring.
Middle of summer.
April.
Be probably the earliest it could be off if it gets, again, if it could be used under, under streets.
Okay, well, these are showing progress with the buildings down and I think they'll understand. So, we'll see.
Okay, should I change anything?
I don't know, I feel like changing something there, I don't know what, but.
Well, we've got a hundred.
Spending some more money than seventy-five thousand in the next budget year.
You think you'll spend more than seventy-five?
To take the concrete out, just to remove the concrete and pile it up and process it. Which processing is bring, getting it into a smaller piece that he can run it through a crusher. Was up to fifty thousand dollars. That didn't, that doesn't mean that he's gonna be able to take it all out for fifty thousand. He wasn't sure. He doesn't know how much concrete was there. So, knowing that. That doesn't include the crushing, which is gonna cost. Probably that and not more. Crushing is gonna be determined by how many. How many ton he estimates are in that pile. That's what his bid will be to crush it.
So why can't you leave fifty thousand there and move the hundred thousand over?
Well, yeah, I, whatever's budgeted now, I won't, won't change, but we just have to make sure we have enough fund balance. To pay for whatever we budget in the requested budget, or I guess we'll borrow.
So, or we do a transfer.
A hundred thousand, is that seventy-five, a hundred thousand? Is that what, hundred thousand?
Would that reduce if we put?
Well, here, here's the other kicker to that whole thing is if, if the rock is, is usable underneath streets. Then it will be sold. So you'll get that money back, the crushing money back.
But it'll show up on our revenue sheet, it won't necessarily show up on our.
But it still has to be moved off the property in order for us to get that fifty thousand, so we have to have a place to store it until.
Which we don't wanna do. We don't wanna move it one time and put it where it goes.
Yeah, so it can stay on the site and we could put in a hundred thousand. And if we wind up going over, then we'll be back with a budget amendment or.
Let's do that.
Or maybe we'll get some grant or revenue back and maybe some of that will wash some of that out, but.
Let's do that Gordon.
Okay, that'll just come.
So twenty-five off of the one fifty and move it over to the seventy-five.
Okay, okay, well. I might have to.
Wait, you can't do it that easy.
Well, I can't, I'll just change the reestimated for FY twenty. It's kind of, it's, it's certainly doable.
What are we making it?
We're, we're going to take twenty-five thousand out of the estimated expenses for twenty twenty. And increase requested capital expenditures by twenty-five thousand.
So a hundred thousand.
Twenty-one, yes.
Alright, let's keep.
Now, you don't have anything in there for Orange Street, fourth to fifth. And you just told me that that's one of the projects.
That's, he's doing that in the uh fund, uh road use tax fund. He's not doing that under a capital project. Uh, he's doing it.
Am I gonna have consulting fees and all that?
We're keeping it underneath that.
Yeah.
The threshold. It's required. Two or three years ago, we were gonna borrow money to pay for that out of a capital improvements fund project and now we're not going to.
Okay.
Matt's just gonna get it done.
He's gonna wave his lawn.
The water fund. I guess tho- those are pretty much what Matt put in his budget. That should be enough. And there's the, the sinking fund. That's not, that comes out of the water fund too, the sixty thousand. And that's to pay those water revenue bonds. Sewer fund, we've got three hundred and ten thousand budgeted. An increase of just ten thousand. Down in solid waste, I guess it's. Here's where we have the same expense that we had for revenue, uh for contract payments, that's payments too. Whomever, I assume it probably would be Johnson County refuse. Local cable access, not much change in expenses there. The commissions, I've, I think I've got the same dollars budgeted again this year as I did last year. Two hundred and fifty thousand for, two hundred and fifty dollars for animal control and planning and zoning, various. Things that Dave does. And we do bill for much of what goes into planning and zoning. We do bill for most of that.
What is, what is utility system replaced?
Well, if we have a breakdown, I guess it can be charged to that.
By consumers.
We increased, we increased the water fund by fifty thousand. Because of utility system replaced. We increased the sewer. By twenty thousand for utility system replaced. So like a broken water main and that, is that what you mean?
It's also for any project that gets done. That's the line that gets used for any project or a break or a replacement.
For instance, the storm sewer intake got rebuilt at uh.
College Street.
Well, there's one at um Downey Street too, just north of my little red house. Yeah, they're all over town. That's, that's what that's for.
We expecting a lot more this year than we did last year.
If you have the breaks, we have the money budgeted to do projects is what it amounts to. Okay, now here, non-departmental, those are transfers out. Emergency fund, that'll be a transfer from the emergency fund to the general fund. It'll be spent wherever it is needed. Uh, options, transfer out, two hundred and thirteen thousand, that'll go to the bond fund. Those are the transfers that I spoke of to pay that first line on that page. For that two, uh twenty thirteen bond. You can see how much had been coming out earlier and this is in page twenty. Those big transfers partly were for paying debts.
Okay. Total expenditures, six million eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty. That's the exact same numbers as our total revenue. Imagine that.
Six hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Oh, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm sorry, I'm looking at expenditures on another one.
Well, fourteen thousand dollars short.
Yeah. You got a problem with that or?
Well, where are you gonna find it?
We have, we sure, fourteen thousand is nothing in a six million dollar budget.
With a two point eight million dollar uh beginning balance and ending balance. That's miniscule. Am I right or wrong?
Not much money, fourteen thousand.
I do my books at home different, but I wanna make sure they come out. Even, I have enough money coming in, pay for what's going out.
Some notes are better than others. You should be a contractor. See how that feels.
I got a real job.
Okay, where are we at? Um, I don't know, I feel pretty good really. Super balanced for the most part. What do we gotta decide?
So I know there's a, not to go back to the portion rec, but I know there's the capital improvements twenty-one eight. I know you still have some money left over on the park project as well. It isn't reflected on revenue, but.
Well, the parks uh project, I was going to transfer money to. The. Stream widening.
Still have the underlying issue that I haven't brought up yet, of fixing them.
Fixing what?
We've had this conversation.
Oh, the base down.
Oh, yeah. Okay. We should save some money aside for that. Any idea how much?
Yeah, so I had the contractor's estimate from whatever, two thousand eighteen and I looked back and the move the irrigation lines was. Was about two thousand dollars. So that was gonna, that's gonna be the expense, but then the fill, we don't have enough, depends on how many fields you wanna do. If you wanna do all three, which would be a great for the.
You have to. You have to do all three. If you're gonna have tournaments, you gotta do all three.
I mean, the boys, it'll accommodate the boys and that's what we're struggling with. We can get the sixty-five foot in there, but we can't get the seventy foot bases. Which is what we're gonna need for eleven and twelves, which we'll say, so.
So, explain to me the irrigation, cause everybody keeps saying the irrigation's at seventy foot. Did they run a line right at seventy feet?
For the most part, yeah. It, it's about maybe six inches in on the, on the grass. So it's, it's right there.
So do we know how deep they're putting in?
They're pretty, they're pretty shallow. I, I don't think it'll be a huge, I don't think it's gonna be a huge expense, but I'm not an irrigation expert, so that is not. I'm, I'm on the conservative side.
The other concern is that if you move, if we're gonna move the bases back, the infills won't be deep enough so that the bases will be on the.
Yeah, you do gravel infills, but.
Yes, that's, and we have the estimates for that too. And I, Richie and I have walked the fields quite a bit to kinda talk about with that and. And I think for the most part, cutting up the sod's gonna be the easy part, he's got a good sod cutter.
No, he does, maybe I could use that.
Yeah, that's good sod. So anyway, so yeah, I, I would recommend and I hate to say it, but to accommodate, not anything else, but to accommodate the boys. Now, it is a shower field, you know, at two-ten, so they're gonna have a, they're gonna have a good time with it.
Well, that's where we're kinda at up.
That's what, that was like, hey, they're gonna have a great time with that, cause they're gonna be knocking it out of the park all the time, so.
But that's just gets us to six.
What do you have?
Sixth grade. That doesn't give you thirteen here.
No, it's not gonna give you a.
So seventh grade.
So where's the seventh grade play now? They play on Richie's field?
But you wouldn't be able to have tournaments unless you do what we do now.
I guess that's kinda up to you and how much you wanna push to get the, the tournaments.
I would say definitely for the younger, the younger kids, the younger boys, the fourth, fifth and sixth graders. That's kinda where we really, there is a need in the community and the boys program is, is still pretty strong. The girls program's kind of at a. Wavering point right now, but, and it'll go. It'll go in cycles like that. And I have been contacted, not just for girls, but from outside groups that would like to run. Boys tournaments using our fields, which is great, cause they're more, they're paying us money, so yay for that.
Ten thousand dollars do three fields?
The fill was the, the fill estimate is gonna be the.
Where did they, where did they get that from, do you know? Okay, so I thought we had to have a. Ties them all.
What's that field on the big one again?
Uh, two eighty-five. So it's a good size, but it's not gonna be too.
You can really, you're not, you know, like.
The drawback is.
But the, the, for the younger boys, I would.
Shouldn't have sold that sod for.
What should we hold back in Covey, what do you think, twenty?
I've got a hundred and nine thousand that I did not transfer.
If it grows.
Oh, that's gotta buy.
The outfield was good condition. It was intermediate grass that was used.
It is in good condition. It still is.
So you can take that grass that we peel off, either sell it or fix the rest.
So for priming.
Okay, back to the budget.
But the question.
We'll get it done.
I was gonna make the question on the large field, would it be worth, and not to throw another wrinkle into it, is, I mean, yeah, right now, thirteen U needs eighty, which can do on the small ones. So right now, what, what they do is legion, and then they utilize the school diamond behind it. So my question would be, if I'm the school and the city builds a brand-new threeplex, that's gonna take softball and baseball, what are they gonna do with those two fields?
Those ones behind the school?
Yes. If I was a school, why would you keep them? Which would then put the seventh graders at a disadvantage of having one useful field.
Guess that's up to the school.
Yeah, I know, but that's what I'm saying.
Taking Richie's field away, all the money they spend on that.
They won't take away that, but they could take away the other one, which is what they utilize to have tournaments. And as soon as they take that away, that puts the seventh grader at a disadvantage. So my request, and have to be, talk about it, would be to take the big field and go to eighty, because that has enough fence for them. That would leave two, I mean, you'd have to drive in between, but we would do now already. That would just be, if we're gonna budget for that, my request, I'm not saying it needs to be done.
So Gordon's holding back a hundred and nine thousand.
In the capital project for, uh.
It's already in Cubby. It's already in Cubby.
I just didn't know if it needed to be put on a piece of paper somewhere.
No, no, I th- I think.
Maybe not.
I don't know when you're gonna do it. If you're gonna do it next year, maybe we need to budget.
Should be done.
If it's gonna be done this year. If there's gonna.
March fifteenth.
If it's gonna be done this year, then it's, we have, we amended the budget to spend up to three hundred and sixty-nine thousand on Cubby Park.
Ideally, we want to use some of that money to go down to the, the creek widening.
Yeah, I think I, I budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand to be transferred to the creek widening.
So what you're saying is, we spent three million on Cubby Park, and we have quite a bit left over. So you wanna, being that's not, wasn't built to the right size, you now wanna take another.
You got, here's, here's the situation. The reason the bases are where they're at, because our former administrator told them that's where he wanted them.
After, after planning and zoning in the council approved tho- those specs, and he went off on his own. I wish there was some way legally we could go after him.
Exactly.
Now, we can, but that's, I mean, that's the end of the day. We value engineered money out of it. That original three hundred and some thousand dollars that we're earmarking for the creek widening was originally set to be spent on the park anyway.
The money's there to get it done, to fix it. Go ahead.
So real quick, I do have a list, and I've given it to Gordon when we did this budget, of kind of the expenses that were dropped out of the park. Um, the pavilion trellis extension, remember that? Um, the parking lot that was cut out, which I feel if the park takes off and get a lot of tournaments, might have to be added back in. Um, uh, things that are mandatory, like the dumpster enclosure and, and different random things like that. So I do kind of have a, a list of some of the items that need to be done, and then some of the items that was ready to be worked, or that are coming down the road. Um, I also did put in there an estimate, and just in case the trail didn't get funded in the regular budget, that it could be taken out of there. That's all context discretion. The numbers are there.
See, that's a whole nother thing. You guys sit there and, well, you guys didn't, sorry. But we sit there and say the, the widening of the creek, widening of the creek, gotta do it, gotta do it, gotta do it. And now, we're gonna buy a Little Lake Diamond.
Well, we've already bought it. We have to fix it.
Finish it.
Well, fix it, whatever. No, we, that one, we can't fix. Well, we can, one diamond. But you're wanting to get the one open.
No, not doing anything with this. Not doing anything to schools or, or legions.
All right, good.
Those three down there need to be fixed.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, if, as, if the school decides not to keep those fields, you've just taken one grade and severely limited its chance to hold any tournaments. Unless you take the big field down there, take it to eighty.
I see now what you're saying.
Not doing anything up there.
Okay.
It would be addressing the fields down here and accommodating at least one of them down there for an age group that right now has one place to play. Where all the ages underneath will have four places to play.
So this list, Melissa, of Lake Quetlin and.
I just wanted to make sure that we have.
Where's that coming out of? You've already got that figured.
It's all.
You've already got that figured.
Cubby Park.
This is, this isn't all Cubby Park.
Well, I, well, part of it was, I, I don't know if someone.
I got most of this.
Yeah, part of it's needs, part of it's wants, and part of the wants is probably to be shifted.
Is this an excess of your budget, what you've, oh.
That's the, from the Cubby Park fund. That's the remaining monies that were left there.
This wants needs to be, this needs to come out of the three hundred and some thousand that we've got left.
Well, that, we've got three hundred and sixty-nine thousand or so. You have to decide how to spend it.
But if she wanted to do all that, would somebody have to go to the?
We gotta have some of this stuff, right?
There wouldn't be any money to go to the creek widening.
Flashcard on it?
No. No, not.
So essentially that.
Cause originally, that's what we were talking about.
It's on here, but it doesn't have it.
The kicker though, is it's three hundred and some thousand dollars. She's got a list earmarked for it. We already have a portion earmarked to go to the downstream widening.
Whatever's left, Cubby Park's the top priority.
I get it, but I'm just saying, so we can't.
Absolute top priority.
We just have to make sure that that's known. If we spend all the money on that, we're not gonna have any money to transfer over to downstream widening.
We're not gonna spend at all on Cubby. There'll, there'll be plenty to do some of the downstream or, or get it started.
That's the discussion. We don't know that yet. You can say that now until we sit here and have a discussion.
You don't wanna get into that project and not, not have enough money for it.
So until we're done, all the way done with city, with Cubby Park, it's really hard to earmark any money towards downstream widening, in my opinion. Not gonna put two hundred or a hundred and nine thousand dollars on downstream widening when we can use.
Let's get Cubby Park done then. Let's finish it and be done with it?
Yeah, that is two hundred and fifty thousand, right?
Now three hundred.
Pardon?
The downstream widening, you have a two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
It's budgeted, doesn't mean it's funded.
Is that just a placeholder? I mean, it's all coming out of the park.
It's a budget, doesn't mean it's funded. Remember, we ran into that.
Cause it's gonna be on park property.
It, it, yeah, I, I don't think we have, we don't have a problem with doing the downstream widening, as long as we stay within Veronic Park boundaries. I was told not to go beyond that, because the attorney wouldn't defend it.
I have no problem.
We could put it at zero, and when it comes to time where we wanna use it, we'd have to amend it.
All right, where are we at tonight then? We got it. Cubby Park's top priority in my life.
I just wanted to bring it up, cause I wanted to make sure that we were having money allotted for that, whether or not it fit into this budget or not. We needed to make sure.
So are we or aren't we?
For what?
Of course, yes, we are. We have standing money to do that.
We have it allotted for Cubby Park, all these.
Not all of that money. I, we have, I was going, I left a hundred and nine thousand.
Yeah, I got it.
I left a hundred and nine thousand in the Cubby Park fund, and I transferred two hundred and fifty thousand to the downstream widening. I did that in the budget for next year. That's what's been done.
Hundred and ninety complete Cubby.
Should be the other way around.
You don't need two fifty on Cubby.
Oh, I haven't seen that list yet. What, what's her total dollar?
I mean, there's certain things, like the, like the parking lot. I mean, we don't need it this year. It might not be something that we really need. It's just one of those items that we've, that I'm anticipating we might, we can't be a double parking lot, right?
I do have one question though. One bathroom? If we have tournaments?
No, there's, there's a one, there's one that's a family restroom, and then the, there's a men's and women's, and each of those has two stalls.
So men's and a women's and a family.
It's a roll-up.
To the north.
We still haven't got the block for that?
No, I checked on it again today.
They're coming from like across the world or something, or what?
I checked on it again today with my builders and their.
What do we have to decide tonight yet?
Whatever input you want me to make on the next bud, uh, on the budget for the next meeting, I can do that. I guess it's up to the council, whatever they want me to change.
We haven't talked about a whole lot of changes.
Just each side development.
We're gonna keep thirty thousand for the set aside and come up with this.
The big question will be with Colton here, is whether we do two point five or one point.
That's.
Because as of right now.
Right now, we're staying two point five.
Anything that we've had presentations on, and we haven't had any questions on, is paid for.
I thought we were one point six, and we were taking the seven thousand out of the fund.
That's what I thought, right? I'm saying, but the budget, the way he's reflecting it, if he wants, if we wanna change that for next time, he would have to take that seven thousand out and not do two point five. It would change the numbers.
Where are you at, Tom? Judy?
I like the one point six.
Because it would get, all the presentations we've had would be paid for money-wise, cause the only increase in taxes right now is two point five, or one point six to two point five.
I think I know what Colton will say. He's, he's at one point six. Sounds like the consensus. I'm speaking for him, but.
So we have three of us.
He's pretty much stays with what the national law.
The only difference it'll be, is it'll take that fourteen grand right now that we have difference and potentially make it twenty-one. Cause if you're not asking for it, it's gotta come from somewhere. So that fourteen thousand dollar difference would be twenty-one thousand dollars.
Well, there'll be an impact on, a slight, a small impact on fr- on fringe benefits, but it's not gonna be significant.
We're gonna stay with that consensus then?
I mean, out of a six million, three million dollar budget, if you get twenty-one thousand dollars.
I look at that as myself. It's nothing, tenth of a percent.
What's that do to the tax levy?
Yeah.
It'll take it down to.
Down to.
Normal.
Yeah, we're at plus or four.
Yeah.
Take it down to one?
It'd be the same.
Now, now, now we didn't talk about all the increases that people are getting. Is there any concern about those?
One point six.
Well, of course. I always have concerns about.
There's a, a substantial one for the police department. One person's get it going from a thirty-five thousand dollar budget this year to fifty-three thousand dollars next year.
Well, all right, you also got public works going from an increase of a hundred and fifty thousand too. So you can't just pinpoint one department. Every department has increased.
Is that reflected in this though?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it, it was the council goals for both of those positions, so.
Reflected in the budget that's in front of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's still, the goal is, it's still the only difference.
Right.
Those are still being paid for.
Hands up.
By all the other levies, and the only difference is the cola, from what I can see. I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that, the, the public works is going down. They had a forty-two thousand dollar budget for part-time people to something less than that.
You're adding another person. How is it going down?
The, because we're budgeting less for the part-time people this year.
Now. Part-time if you want a full-time, so there won't be as much part-time.
We also, it'll be in there, believe me. The part-time will not go away.
We've also have more tax money.
He's going to college in August.
Also, the offset, we've also received more tax money this year too. So I mean, just because we sit here and say, it's not as stable, like you and I, I mean, if you don't get a raise, you stay at the same amount of money, but we get more tax money every year. So that also offsets whatever increase. Which is like what you said. We got that cost of adjustment money, but you pretty much came in and said, hey, we made a hundred, whatever it was more, but now that's all gone and raises and whatever.
Okay.
We can pay for everything we've had presented to us, not raise taxes.
What's this, Gordon? What do you need next time, Nate Gordon?
Well, I guess what I need to do is change the salaries. Now, what are we gonna, and with the, um.
That's gonna affect a bunch of these.
Yeah, it will affect all the trust and agency.
Sewer, the sewer fund gonna go up?
Sewer fund will go down.
The revenue.
Well, the sewer revenue, yeah, I'm sorry. I was thinking of the expense side.
Yeah, so.
I guess we won't pave an alley this year, next year. Let's just see where we're at.
How bad is that alley?
It needs rock.
It needs paved.
Huh?
It needs rock because it washes away.
Rocks and rosemary.
We're rocking it, it washes out in the street. Eventually, it was in the storm sewer running first.
Do we have a number on what that might cost?
Yeah, I got estimates on gas holding every one of them a couple of years ago. I'm not gonna push it. Until you guys decide you wanna do it, I'm not saying another word about alleys. I don't care. All clean rock up and be out there and let us in the street.
He's staying out of it, cause he's, he's heard all about it.
This is gonna have a whole lot of rock. We're gonna have a whole lot of rock. We can put in there and.
It'll still wash down.
I did say vacate it and make them pay for it themselves.
I don't know, what am I doing next? What, are we done?
As a public street? Nobody does, except people who will vacate it and make them pay for it.
Well, we can.
They have full access to the streets in the front of their homes.
They can't get to their garage.
Doesn't matter. Legally, they have access through easements to get to their property. That's a Kevin question, but legally, we can. We can quote all they want, but they have access.
I can't see us doing that.
Well, then they're not gonna get it paid.
Anything else we need to talk about?
Well, I will.
Meeting, we got a meeting in one week.
Yeah, I'll try to have.
Find some things and get.
Try to have something available next.
We gonna go through this again?
Well, I can show, I can show you the impact on the budget sheet.
Keep it short and sweet.
As I say, I don't think we need to.
We don't line by line.
No, not line by line.
Guys are comfortable now with the information.
And I, okay, I'll make a bold statement, that if Colton wants to know more, he can sit down with Gordon, cause I don't wanna sit through three hours again.
They'll sit down with a one-on-one.
Just throwing that out.
But we had some new, we had some new folks and.
No, I agree with this. I'm just saying, I don't wanna do it again, so.
No, we're not.
Colton can learn it, and we get to sit here through it again.
He's been through this, he knows.
I know, I agree, but I'm just throwing that out.
We're happy for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry, you're gonna do it again.
I guess I'm ready to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Second versus second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.